Okay, let's call the meeting to order. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's June 16, 2021 revised order, this meeting of the Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee will be conducted both in person and remote. In-person attendance will be limited to school committee members, superintendent, and all district school administrators. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted at this time. However, the meeting may be accessed remotely through Zoom. Agenda items listed are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed. Those items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by CTSB, the school committee recorder, Berkshire Edge, Berkshire Eagle, and other members of the public. Once transcribed and approved, minutes will be made public and posted to our website. So we'll start the meeting with a roll call before we go into executive sessions. Ann Hutchinson?
Aye.
Jason St. Peter?
Aye.
Sean Stephen?
No, keep going.
Okay, guide me through who's here. There's not a... I don't think anyone else is. Bonnie Von Befoni?
Aye.
Molly Thomas? Bill Fields here. Diane Singer. Cory Sprague?
Here.
Rich DeHornig here, and here. So there are three members of the school committee missing at this point. So the beginning of the meeting is an executive session. We will... For those in the audience, attendees, you can stay on Zoom. You'll be... Our conversation will be muted. We will go into another... Into Google Meets, I think is what we're going into. And then we will come back. We anticipate it shouldn't be more than 15 minutes, but you never know with these things. But we will come back into executive session. So the Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee will enter into an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 38, Section 21A, Number 2 and 3, to discuss strategy with respect to negotiations, collective bargaining. Holding this discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect on negotiations. Immediately following executive session, the school committee will be convened to open session to continue the regular meeting through the Zoom login that most of you are on right now. So I need a motion. Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
And to return to open session. So I have a motion by Rich, a second by Bill. Roll call vote. Ann?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Bonnie?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And aye. So we will be back into public session. Roll call because a few people have joined us in between. So Ann Hutchinson?
Aye.
Jason St. Peter?
Aye.
Sean Stephen, I don't think, has joined us. Bonnie Von Befoni?
Aye.
Molly Thomas?
Here.
Bill Fields?
Here.
Diane Singer?
She'll say something.
Diane, can you say you're present?
Here.
Cory Sprague?
Yeah, this is Diane.
Thank you.
Cory Sprague?
Yeah.
Thank you. Rich DeHornig? And here. So nine out of 10. So let's go back. We have the minutes of November 4, 2021, and November 18, 2021. Do you have a motion?
I'll just approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion by Rich, a second by Bill. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Ann?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Bonnie?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Bill?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Cory?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And it's unanimous. We now have the superintendent's report.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. So, a couple things. So we've got a very robust meeting. Would the principals be okay if we skip the good news tonight? Okay, so let's do that. But I'll move on to student member items in case Julianne has any. Julianne, do you have any member items, student items?
I'll be really quick. Spring musical is going to happen, hopefully, fingers crossed. So that's in the preliminary stages. Student Advisory Board met today, so that's a group of 60 students that get to sort of provide student voice to the principal, which is a really amazing thing. Winter athletics are in full effect. Zoe is at swim practice right now, so we're missing her. Basketball teams, swim teams are all undefeated, so fingers crossed that that continues. Wrestling and skiing are both underway. Skiing is continuing to stay active with a lack of snow. Big thank you to Mr. Arena and Mr. Ziggman for sort of setting up the way that we're able to have spectators at basketball games, because that's a really amazing thing. Stoke is active throughout the school, working with students. It's great to sort of just see them in all aspects of student life and really working to move forward. There's going to be a band concert or orchestra chorus concert in mid-January, which is really exciting. A little daunting to think that many people will be playing their instruments in one room, but we'll see how that goes. Wellness is really at an all-time low. With break coming up, there's this stigma of needing to get everything done before break, so many are sort of clinging on for dear life. Yesterday, a number of our seniors found out about colleges. It's a really, really exciting thing. Students are getting into very, very exciting, very good colleges and having very exciting opportunities coming their way. So it just sort of is a great example of what our district is doing for students. And then just finally, the drop-off at that high school seems to be improving, but it's amazing the lengths that people are going to still avoid it.
Okay. Thank you, Julianne. You win the prize for cramming a lot into very little time.
That's right.
A great life skill to have. So the next thing is, every so often, we put our transportation out to bid, and I'll have Sharon Harrison talk about the process, and then we'll have, hopefully, a motion to approve and award the transportation contract. So Sharon?
As Peter said, we had to go out to bid. We came back with one bid for the transportation. We went up for a contract that is for three years with two one-year renewals, which I would expect that we would continue. It's very much the same as in the past. We start at one rate the first year, and then it will increase by the COLA, the CPI, change over the year. The... We came back with a large bus increase of just under 30%, $508. Small bus at $474, a van at $448. Activity buses are now at $400, a midday van $254, and the after-school bus at $125. Again, the contract would be for three years with two one-year renewals. I would ask the school committee to accept the contract so that we can get this in process. Any new buses and vans are anywhere from six to nine months out on ordering, so we're going to take the... Accept the bid. We would want to let the company know so that they can start planning for the new school year.
I have a motion. Did you have a formal motion for that, or did you want me to just...
You could just have a motion to accept the bid.
Okay. I have a motion. I have a motion to accept the bid, as presented. Do you have a second? I have a second for Ann. Motion by Rich. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote. Ann?
You don't have a choice. There's not much to discuss.
Right. Ann?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Bonnie?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Bill?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Cory?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And aye. It's unanimous. Nine.
Thank you.
Okay.
So thank you for your help there. So the next thing Sharon and I are going to do are present our preliminary budget. We've been working hard with the principals and other administrators, and specifically the finance subcommittee on this. This is our draft preliminary operating budget. I don't know if we could make it more conditional. It's a starting point, and we will keep working through it over the next several months. We'll presumably get lots of public comment, and we'll dive deeply into details. It's not uncommon for us to make significant revisions over the course of the budget process. Okay? So what I'm going to do, and this will be interesting, I don't actually know how it's going to work for the people here, the people in this room have a printed copy of it, it's also in the packet, but I'm going to present slides on the screen, and I think if you set your screen at home to the speaker screen and not the, like, Brady Bunch-type screen, the gallery screen, it'll be big enough that you can see this. Okay? So give me just a sec. Steve, can I switch computers with you?
Of course.
To do this. Sorry, what my issue is, there's like, I'm using a new computer, and there's a setting that's not set on the new computer, and you don't notice that until you're presenting something on PowerPoint. So I think I can get my old computer to do it.
Okay. So I'm sorry. I'm going to have to present this verbally. If you're at home watching along, it's... I believe it's within the school packet. I'll include it in the packet as well. So... I'm going to talk from the slides. So what we're presenting is this draft preliminary budget. It's presented in now for two reasons, so that we can start to review all budget requests from the administrators, and the school committee will have considerable time to consider and discuss the budget. So what typically happens is we start talking about this now, although in reality, we've been talking about it since August, and we'll meet through January and February, and often the school committee will vote on it sometime in March, and then it'll be brought to the three-town meetings that typically happen in May, but this year in Great Barrington in particular may happen in June for the three towns to vote on it. We're... There are a couple things that we're not going to know right away. We don't know what the revenue estimates will be from the state until the third week of January, and the true impact on the towns will be known after the third week in January. We'll get to some other things, too, that are a little bit up in the air, like the increase to health insurance. The budget establishes funding or levels of funding for us to provide high-quality education for all students. In this time in particular, it supports students in recovering from the pandemic, the ongoing pandemic, and it lets us evaluate programs that provide the greatest educational return, right? So we do this an ongoing basis and look at where our investments are really impactful. So a couple things in terms of our budget priorities. We invest in meeting students where they are, and now more than ever, meeting students where they are is really complex. We've done a lot around smaller groupings as a primary support. We're doing some work around tutoring to provide additional targeted personalized learning as necessary, and we're doing a lot of work around supporting health and well-being. In terms of content and curriculum, we try to provide a really thoughtful curriculum across the district, and we're investing in team meetings in and across buildings. So the educators talk about it as horizontal and vertical planning, and the horizontal planning would be all the sixth-grade teachers sit together to work on stuff and support both curriculum learning and students, and the vertical one would be all the teachers teaching math or all the teachers teaching art in the district. We talk about that pre-K through 12th grade. At the elementary school, a continued focus on learning and development with an emphasis on reading and math. We hope to reinstate the early K, but we think we can do that by reassigning staff, by not requesting new resources, and lots of work on deep professional development in reading and math. At the middle school, a focus on math, updating the social studies curriculum materials, expanding opportunities around field study and service learning, and additional work on language-based programming, right? And we'll go into fine detail on this, and I can sort of talk about it at 30,000-foot level, and then the principals can talk about it more specifically as it's tied to line items. At the high school, additional work on math, additional work on CTE, that's Career and Technical Education. Sometimes we call it Career Technical Vocational Education. Previous generations called it Vocational Education. It's something we value and see as really meaningful, and we're recommending we add a licensed director for those programs on the level of what an assistant principal would be in a typical setting. We were looking, as we sort of continue to share successes and challenges around some of the ninth-grade work, to expand that potentially to 10th grade and expand opportunities both around student groupings and scheduling. The... Sharon, is this where I'm going to to you? Yes. So I'm going to have Sharon... I'm going to hand the baton to Sharon, and she's going to talk about some of the numbers and some of the technical pieces.
So Peter said we couldn't get any more... Couldn't have any different language around the draft preliminary budget. We often have draft preliminary working budget so that people know that it's still in process. So we have this slide, operating budget, and again, that's the working budgets and not set in stone. It won't be until we present it as a proposed budget. Right now, the gross operating budget has an increase of 4.67%, and the preliminary net assessment is an increase to the town of 5.45%. The gross operating budget is all-in before we subtract for school choice and tuition. That leads to preliminary town increases between 4.5% and 10.61%. As Peter said, one of the largest unknowns for the impact to the towns is what the minimum local contribution will be for each town, and that won't be known until the third week in January when the governor comes out with his proposed budget. The change in the budget is $1,413,931, which leads to the 4.67% change. On the next page, as it shows what the changes are, and the percentage of... That are shown here is not the percentage of change in the category, but the percent as part of the total change. So for example, salary change of 42.98, that's 42.98% of the total change of the budget, that 1.4 million. Transportation total of 17.95, and again, a big part of that is the increase in the new contract. Insurance and other benefits, that's health insurance, that is medex tax, other kinds of unemployment insurance at 13.96. The last Monday in January is the meeting with the Berkshire Health Group, which we are a member, where they'll be setting the rates, so this percent change could change based on what will happen there. Retirement, a change of 6.4%, and that is the retirement that the district has to pay to the Berkshire County Retirement System for all of our non-certified employees. Tuition is the increase, again, part of the total, 6.288,000, and that's for students that are tuitioned out of district for very specific needs in their education. Facilities and operations increases about 60,000, and that's about 4% of the total change. Activities and athletics is increasing in proposal of 41,243. That includes an increase in transportation for athletics at the high school and increases in activities as well as stipends for activity advisors. Other insurances include our general liability insurance, school committee insurance, and what I did with that is I took this year's insurance costs and increased them by 10% because that has been the average of what the increase has been for those insurances. Educational supplies, materials, equipment, exactly what it sounds like. That's just over 1% of the change at 17,000. School committee, 7,532. That's primarily a change in memberships. Professional development, that includes stipends as well as services. Technology is up only about $2,500. That's because we are using some of the larger SIR grants to impact technology without increasing the operating budget. District-wide professional services and fees, that's everything from legal to special ed services. So it's a small increase in professional services and fees. Questions to this point? The capital budget is two pieces. One is the payment of interest, principal and interest on the bond for the elementary and middle school. Very exciting. This is second to last year. And then, based on the discussions that the school committee has had over these past few months, I did put in $116,000. That's just a number that we've always thrown around, so I put that in there as suggested so that we can continue to do some extraordinary maintenance on the high school while we're deciding what kind of project will be used there. As you can see by the asterisk, that total amount of the 116 will be offset by use of excess inefficiency. The next page is the revenue for the capital. The MSBA has a fixed rate of $1,120,934. Then E and D, as I said, was 116,000. So the total on that is actually a net increase of a minus 2.39. The assessments to member towns are based on three considerations. The population allocation, the number of students in each town as a percentage of the total number of resident students. That, even though it's, what was it, eight students, to Stockbridge change, they had eight more students, that is part of that big impact of that 10% increase. The minimum local contribution, which we talked about, and then the net assessment, which I had in previous slides. Assessment to member towns, it shows you here, seven students. It shows here, Great Barrington decreased, Stockbridge increased by seven students, and West Stockbridge decreased by one. So even though it's only seven students, it's a large impact given what has been happening in the other two towns. And then the final slide before questions, the variables in K. We play House One, which I talked about, which is the governor's budget. The minimum local contribution, which is part of House One, health and dental insurance rates, which will be set the last Monday. I'm very hopeful because we have a very strong balance in there that we won't see an increase, but I never count on that until the vote, the early education census, and then we never know between now and the fall any unanticipated program changes.
Any questions? Yeah. So we threw a lot at you. And this is just our first go-around. This won't be the only chance. Cory, go ahead.
So you mentioned that technology is lower than expected because of grants. Are there other places where expenditures seem lower because of money that we're able to use in France?
I think most of the other expenses, we're looking at a one-time expense as opposed to technology where we're keeping the amount in the budget pretty stable because we're using it there, whereas everything else is on either one-time or short-term, where we might have, for example, you've heard about the... We have a speech-language pathology assistant that we're using some of our current funding, grant funding for, and that is just to make up for the loss of testing over the last two years. So we anticipate that will go away. So more of our costs for the grants are like that because you don't want things in grants that you know you're going to have to either put in or cut.
But I do think there are a couple things, some recurring charges that we have go-to grants, that we shared that last couple meetings ago. A lot of stuff tied to professional development is tied to recurring federal entitlement grants, right? So that's a good thing because we know the money. We're going to keep getting the money. The giant two-departmented justice grants are funding some safety stuff and some stuff that's broadly connected to wellness, including a lot of... and some stuff that's broadly connected to wellness, including a lot of our diversity, equity, and inclusion, which is part of safety, it's framed in a really interesting way. So that's another piece. And then, the Great Barrington revenue from the marijuana sales that continues to fund the wellness position of the district. So there, there are places and there may be times, like, I don't know how many times we can keep going back to Great Barrington and still getting support for that, but that's looking like a role that has a huge impact on the district. And, and for a future budget, we might wanna, we might wanna build, build some of that in. Other questions? I have one in the audience, I'm not hearing the school committee, so Erica, briefly?
Hi guys, thank you, Erica Milky, 13 East Street. I was just curious, I haven't started coming to finance committee meetings because I can only handle so much, but I was curious at what point, and if it's too late for this fiscal year to, for the next fiscal year to discuss the potential for expanding the role of the immigrant family liaison, or even potentially having one per school, because the impact that they're having is amazing. And the funding that we agreed upon earlier this school year really is just amounts to just like a stipend for a partial position, but the work that they're doing and could do is pretty massive.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's a really good question and my one, everybody was pretty nice about not having good news, but had we shared good news, one of the things we would have shared was our, our person in that role and her partner from Railroad Street in a parallel role helped host a meeting Monday night with 80-plus members of the immigrant community. And, and it was at Berkshire South. And dinner and meetings and community building, education, and that's like a total game changer. So what you're talking about is, is really important. And if you were bringing that up in March, I might say we should really think about it for next year, or we should write a grant, I think it's, it's something we should start talking about in game day. Anyone else before we move ahead? Thank you very much. Okay, so we'll do some more on this, and next time I need to share my discerning, I'll be able to do that. So the next thing on the agenda, and you got these in your, in your packets in advance, are the three school improvement plans. And the school improvement plans are fairly closely aligned, and I'm happy about this, with the, the district improvement plan, right, and the, and the district goals. And I think it would be exhausting for us to read through them line by line, but I think you, you may have questions, or you may want the principals to highlight a couple things that they're looking forward to or excited about. How, how would you like to proceed with that?
Let's start with questions and then we'll let the principals go ahead.
On all three, are we moving through each one?
Oh, we'll do all three, but maybe let's start with Muddy Brook and then, and do that, and then we'll go to the DeBoys and Monument. Any questions on Muddy Brook? If not, let's hear from the principal.
Assuming there's no questions.
Yes.
So I think you've probably heard a lot of what's on here already, or mention of it. The biggest, we're, our competency work and leading up to a portrait of a graduate, we're focusing on social emotional learning this year. Just because mainly we're, we're collecting data to put that map in ELA where we are so that we can get a good idea of how to move forward. You do know with MAP that we're purchasing a new MAP series. With ELA inquiries this year, we're gonna look really into the ELA curriculum next year and make sure that we have all the areas of reading instruction covered. I'm trying to think if there's anything that I haven't mentioned. You can be assured that goals and evaluation goals are aligned to, many to SEL. And just a couple for ELA right now, and many for MAP. And we are just getting to know our family liaison. And actually tomorrow, we have the Stoke folks returning to our building to spend the day interviewing parent professionals and teachers, both special ed and gen ed teachers, to get more feedback on the education. For our little add-on, elementary add-on.
Any questions?
I think it's more of like an overall process question. It's great that we get together and do this as a group to talk about it going forward, but is there a point in time where we look at the year that just passed to see and measure?
We can do that.
Okay.
We've done it periodically. Right, and it's also, I mean, that's what's in part of the annual report is meant to be.
Yes.
So, I, I think, one of the things Steve and I were talking about, maybe it was today, was trying to map out a school committee calendar. It's almost like a syllabus where there's like the planting season and you get the fields ready. And then there's the budget season, and you talk a lot about budget. And then there's a time in the year when we might wanna reflect on where we're at. And another time in the year when we may wanna reflect on athletics and the extracurricular programs. So Steve and I will play around with that a little bit as a draft, and we'll bring it back to the group. And then we leave time in our agendas to talk about pressing things of the moment, but we would also have a series of recurring topics that we try to address each year, or each quarter, or each month, something like that. Cory, does that sound like that?
Yeah.
We'll get to some of that.
I think, yeah, I just think if we're making the time to do this, I think we should do it on the other side too. I think it's just good practice. But my other question, kind of again, generally across all three, it's just, who is the intended audience? Like, are these written for the administrators and specialists and teachers at the school? Is it written as a communication device to parents?
I, I, I think it's probably the district improvement plan, which is a tool of the school committee that helps craft some of how we allocate our resources and prioritize things, is important for that. But the second level of importance is to inform the school plans. The school plans end up being very closely tied to teacher goals. So the, as the principals often craft their plans with teachers, then the teachers are in a cycle of sharing their own goals right around this time, or Thanksgiving. And their goals are often tied to that. So I think primarily it's a district, school committee, administrator, teacher thing. And some of them are jargon-ing, right? Which is the other, the other anticipated thing. But, but then I think, like, then that should get translated into something that, that is accessible to parents and students. And the most remarkable schools I've ever visited or been a part of are the ones where a six-year-old can concretely, in their own words, explain what the goals of the school are, as well as the principal, and maybe even the custodian cafeteria lady, and obviously parents and other people. So I think that's where we wanna get aspirationally.
Anyone else? I have a clear, broad question. So we had passed a policy regarding diversity recruitment, retention, and hiring. That was supposed to be reflected in the school improvement plans. I noticed a point, the district improvement plan wasn't in there. I mentioned it, I don't save any here on any of these, maybe I'm missing something, but.
We're, we're working with Stoke on that, and, and we'll come back to you with some more there. Anyone else on the elementary school or broader picture?
I just have a question on, it's, it's in the high school plan, but it's also mentioned in both the Muddy Brook and the DeBoys plans. This panorama data management system will be used to track student SEL and academic data as it compares to student demographic status. I, my question is, and I should probably, I've, I've heard of the data management, but would somebody explain to me this Orwellian term? The panorama data management system, and how it's used to, to track? And who keeps all this information? And how is it shared? It, it, it just kinda, I was taken back by it. So I just like to have some explanation as to what it is and to what, it obviously is going to be very important to all three schools. But I think there are some people who would kind of, wait a minute, what are we getting into? Tracking students' social emotional learning and academic data? So does information from grades go into this? Okay, so I just like to know.
It, it's a series of surveys and benchmark assessments that let us look at our kids in relation to other people's kids. I don't think the, every year when we, or every two years when we share the prevention needs assessment, survey data, people cheer about how valuable the insights are there. And that's one set tied to a national, state, and, and county database. This is similar, and there are people out there who, who are, are concerned about big data, corporate interests. We see this as a valuable tool. And we could talk some more about it. You could read a lot of stuff that speaks of it in a very positive light. And you could, you could find a group of, of people who have reservations about it. Right, and, and then there's some people who are real like conspiracy theorists.
Right.
I think this is the end.
I'm not, I'm not in that camp. I just, it seems to me it's, it's a broad program, and I have had some concerns about who sees it, how's it shared, of what uses it to teachers? And to administrators? How does that data, what happens to it after the student graduates? How is it dealt with? Who's, who sees it beyond the school?
I'm tempted to say tracks them for the rest of their life. But it's very provocative. John, John, do you wanna talk, you're certainly involved by it, do you wanna talk a little bit about it?
It doesn't create any data, it just houses all the data we're already collecting in one place so that it's more user-friendly for us, the administrators and the tutors, especially the student support teams, is what it's really finally geared towards, the student support teams, they're helping students in several various ways and just tracks all that data for us, so we can use it and share it amongst the team. And then other folks can input information into this one place and just allow, it's a place that holds all the stuff we're already tracking. We're not tracking anything, we do, it's just.
So it's like the cloud. It's where all the stuff is stored. And then like. Right, the individual teacher teams can then access it in regards to what they're teaching or to like, for example, the new change at the high school. It, it's, it's more of a student support piece than anything else. So I couldn't go in, a teacher couldn't go into it and find an individual student, could he? The only, the only student that a teacher can see are the students that they have. Okay, right, alright.
So I mean, I, I think it's safe, there are lots of protocols, similar things. We, we use a different system for tracking students' IEPs, right? And, and the teachers that work with those students can, can see parts of it. But even I, as superintendent, don't have access to, to things. Any other questions? Anyone else on the?
Sure. Very similar to the different improvement plan, but very similar to the elementary plan. They have three goals. First goal is really around proficiencies, we're really working hard on defining what we want students to know and be able to do and understand in the big picture. There are four proficiencies, you know, the three big things that a kid's working on, needless this quarter. So what Kate, Kate was saying. A kid cannot particularly know what they're doing and be in control of their learning and know what their objectives are. When you put it all together, it's kind of called the portrait of a graduate. I'm sure people have thought about that in relation to the high school. The second goal is really around social emotional learning, making sure we're holding students, students are known and seen, and that we're really, we're really just maintaining our focus on teaching all students, not just some students. And then lastly, we're really trying hard to do more on involvement of parents, families, and community workers in the life of the school. So those are the three overall goals.
Questions?
I guess my only comment is just compared to the other improvement plans, there aren't any necessarily strict timelines on these. And I see here 2021, 2022, but I think the intention is they go to 2024. So just in terms of accountability, trying to sort of have some way of measuring that we're on track and that we're making progress.
Anyone else? Go on to the high school, Krista.
Okay, so again, it's very closely aligned with the district improvement plans. First goal has directed to the work that we've heard, we talked quite a lot about in regards to proficiencies. We're really targeting and going after identifying all of our graduation proficiencies by the end of this year, and that ties to the portrait of a graduate. The portrait of a graduate is a broader definition. So like, for example, the characteristic of a portrait of a graduate might be, we want all students to be responsible citizens. And a graduation proficiency is what are the skills and knowledge that we would expect a responsible citizen to demonstrate? And those are the things that we want our students to demonstrate through their course of high school. More specifically, in the classroom, those things still have to be broken down further into what we refer to as performance indicators, which is the next part of this goal. And the performance indicators are the very specific measurable tasks tied to units in the classroom. So once we identify our graduation proficiency, the next level of this is to start to identify our performance indicators, which teachers are already working on specifically in the ninth grade team, but really across the school, people are in different places with this right now. And then rubrics for how to assess the level of student performance connected to these indicators or standards. Right, we often talk about them as standards in the context of the Massachusetts Frameworks. So performance indicators are very similar to that. Sometimes some of the standards get bunched together into a performance indicators. We're not trying to do, you know, 75 performance indicators over the course of the elementary class because that's part of where the Massachusetts Frameworks and the common core can become unrelieved in the classroom in terms of the measurement of student performance over time. Connected to this is the units that we're working on developing for students. And specifically, the third goal is around opportunities in these assessments and units for students to really personalize their line and have opportunities to excel. And that's the students connected to the work that we're doing around honors distinction. The students have to have opportunities to excel and demonstrate that, to earn the honors distinction. The second goal is around the work that we've been doing now for several years, connected to the culture that we're building with teachers and the teamwork that we're doing to have authentic collaboration in all of this work with one another, and the impact that the culture of collaboration among teachers has on student outcomes. And then also, under goal two, is the work that we're doing also aligned to our social emotional learning and the standards in passing. The third goal is tied to communication and collaboration with students and families and the community. The third goal is tied to communication and collaboration with students and families and community. Julian mentioned, we have our student advisory board meeting today, so we're making some headway finally. On getting student voice into decision making and feedback on a regular basis, and we're going to continue that work. We're still working on our sort of justice and shifts in that way. And then the final is connected to building two-way communication with families and community partners. So that we're not just communicating out, but we're also trying to get information back and really be dating in improvements.
Questions, problems?
Two more observations, one, just, there's been a lot of talk about technology. District level, and it was one thing, and there was some mention of the. Parent communication still on the high school plan, but otherwise that I feel like was noticeably absent from a lot of them, and so I just didn't know. Kind of where and how that might fit into. The various initiatives, because I feel like there's a lot of time and money being put into technology. At the district and didn't see it here, so it doesn't need to be answered now, but just an observation. And then I think the other questions like observation, again, with a lot of the. Initiatives, a lot of the jargon, stuff like that, whether it's ruler and castle and stuff like that, if it might be. Interesting and helpful to the parent population to almost create like monthly webinars or things like that. That the community can call in to, to learn more about these things and kind of start to demystify them and break them down.
I particularly like that idea, and I think a series of short webinars, that nobody wants to sign up for three hour meeting. But people might sign up for a twenty minute or a half hour one.
Yep, and it can be recorded, so if you can't make it, you can always jump on at another time to hear it, but just something that would be more accessible so people. If they want to, can start learning more about it.
No, I think that's good.
Anyone else? I just had a question for goal number one, about how CTE fits into these goals. Proficiencies and wondering if and how we're including the CTE pathways. And understanding that some students might be sort of more towards a CTE career and proficiency and sort of. Focusing on that might be important.
I'm not sure I've gotten a question in that segment.
Yeah, I mean, the question is, are, are, will there be proficiencies? And these cross-curricular content-specific ideas in CTE, or are these focused solely on math, science, English?
No, no, all, so all of the departments, so yesterday, Wednesday at our professional development, every department, including. Our CPTE, music, art, even library science, all of them. Wrote content-specific graduation proficiencies, and then. What we did actually is the teachers were looking at all of them for the ones that are shared among multiple areas and those become the cross-content. Graduation proficiency, the big obvious one is communication, but there are others. Problem solving comes up in a lot of places, critical thinking, analyzing, things like that. Are skills that go across content into the CPTE, those are included.
Anyone?
Oh, there's one more, sorry. Peter, Peter, I'm gonna duck as I say this, but. With, again, a lot of focus at the district and school level with professional development and the idea that was on the table last year for the Wednesday. PD days, because it would seem to me that it helps to have more recurring kind of. More weekly or, you know, that type of thing to reinforce things that need to happen. Is there any appetite at all to put that kind of endeavor back on the table?
I strongly supported it and.
As did I.
And almost got my head bit off over it, I, I am willing to do it again if there's. Interest in a level of support, I think it could, I get the downside is the impact it has on. Families and parents and.
I don't, if we are able to provide robust programming for that second half of the day, though, I don't think it has to.
Yeah, yeah.
Provide any, I don't think it has to be a negative, I don't think anyone loses, I guess.
Now, I would like to take a look at it again with a very deliberate plan that addresses. As many possible concerns as we could have and bring it back.
Well, two things, one of the objections of that was that it was another. Last minute plan slipped in three months after the calendar was promoted and long after the budget session was concluded. And one of the ideas that was born out of that is that if we needed to provide additional professional development. That maybe it could be done in a way outside of the school day, with the understanding that there would be compensation, and that was left off, that if there was going to be that proposal, it'd be in this budget session. We just went through eight weeks of finance committee meetings, where not one administrator raised a peep about increasing time in the budget. To compensate teachers for additional professional development. So if that's going to be in this budget, if, if, we can't keep taking up these major policy things, which upheaval things at the last minute outside of the budget session. The calendar is on the, is on the schedule for next year for January. We either do it this January or we do it next January with some.
My understanding, though, was that it was not additional PD, it was just possibly better scheduled PD. So it wasn't happening a random Wednesday here and then a Friday there and then a.
No, it was increased.
I think it was every Wednesday where there was a four, five day. I mean, I don't remember the details, I think it came out to like two, two more days of PD or something like that, I don't know.
Well, let's have the administration come back if they want to, if they plan to, and Rich is right, it needs to be done fairly quickly. I'm not sure, it was pretty unanimous, but it was pretty heavy that it wasn't well received.
No, and if, if we could present it in a way that was cost neutral or was covered by grant funds. That would be the way I would present it.
We, we have an obligation to provide professional development to our teachers, we'll pay for it if we need to pay for it.
I don't think it was a cost so much, I think it was a disruption to family, which, as Corey pointed out, maybe there's ways to.
It was, and the way to move the disruption away from families and to not reduce the classroom time. Was to have, to expand the school day for the teachers and not the students, and that we have to compensate them for that. That's where the budget area.
I, I think we have to be really careful, but when we talked about this a year ago. Everybody was really optimistic about going back to school that was normal. And it's been anything but normal, so even us having a public conversation about. Adding additional time to teachers' days and the time when like. People are really struggling, fundamentally struggling. And, and that's reflected in. Attendance, there are issues people are having with their own families, I don't know that this is the. The time to have people who are working, whatever, fifty hours a week to now do another five hours on top of that. I think this might be the time to look at how we use our existing resources and time is one of them differently.
So my, my brother lives out in Colorado and they do this, every Wednesday the kids go to school two hours later. So they don't go to school until ten AM, and they have programs for them to drop off children at eight o'clock in the morning for the two hours. For parents who work and then they bring them in, maybe not, maybe not the afternoon, maybe they also think about a morning program.
So let, let, let me relook at our. Previous proposal, let me check in with the administrators and mid-January we'll, we'll come back to you.
Just, I mean. Is that, why don't you want to take a straw poll or something, because we have about a thousand unanswered proposals and things on the road, and we're going to revisit a thing that was voted down, ten to one?
My comment is, if we lose one hour of class time, that's unacceptable for me, especially after going through a pandemic and the loss of stuff. So if we could do anything like Rich says, that we add it on in a different way, but for me, it's a no-go from the start. Personally, if, if any of this involves less class time for the kids, I'm not talking about them being with anyone but their teachers. You know, if we have programs, that's unacceptable, just personally, I might be the one out of nine, but that's, just so we get that out there, that's my personal.
No, and you're talking about this, and, and the other problem is, I think in a normal year, which we may not have for a long time. This proposal may be controversial, right now, the way things are, I still don't think things are right to do this. But that's just my opinion, I could be convinced otherwise, but it would take a lot.
I, I, let me come back with, with this thought a little better. And obviously.
You, you put together a fully thought out written proposal, provided to the chairperson, held aside earlier, puts it on the agenda, we voted this down.
We have a lot going on, but if it's going to be not only controversial, but voted down again. Why spend two hours at a meeting to, to vote it down and cause controversy?
Well, it was voted down because of the, one, the way it was presented, but also the complexity that involved. With parents and the perception that this was suddenly just done.
I don't think we presented it well, and that's maybe what. So any other questions, let's get back to the school improvement plan, any other questions on that? We always discuss this, we should vote to accept the school improvement plans. Because we're never quite sure whether, we always vote every year.
Yeah. I should accept the school improvement plans.
Second motion.
Discussion. Anne. Jason.
Hi.
Bonnie.
Hi.
Molly.
Hi.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Jess.
Corey.
Hi.
Rich.
Hi.
And I tune in, I'm counting to zero. Next is a pool testing and. Yeah, let me just say, so on the agenda was this proposal to create a dog therapy club at the high school, we're going to come back. To you with that on January thirteenth. And it's something we've internally been talking about, and we'd like to talk to you about it.
Can I just ask why it's coming before the school committee, because we've never discussed any other clubs at the high school before?
I'm happy to share why it is, because there's liability implications around it. There probably, if you had a welding club, it might come before the school committee too.
There's also policies about animals in the high school, which do require.
New clubs require improvement.
Yeah, there's a lot of reasons that would come before us, and it's also smart for administration to bring in the group of ours, it's new, so we're not surprised by it. And it's a good way to get it publicly to the ball. Yeah, but so we'll, we'll come back on that, the next thing on this is, is. From our last meeting, and if you indulge me in this, Steve, I'd like to talk a little bit about COVID nineteen and then come back to. Pool testing and the potential vote, so at, at the last meeting, the committee asked me to look into some things. And the two things were, did we have the capacity to do pool testing at a greater scale? And it is my belief that it would be tiring to do, but we do have the capacity to do. And part of doing that, like, so internally, our nurses, secretaries and principals. In, to various degrees are involved in pool testing, and I think we could double our capacity to do it. A lot of this would hinge on, the amount of time we do it in a building is typically two hours. And we might need to extend the time from two to, to three or three and a half. And then county ambulance provides support by sending three people typically, and we might need to expand that support from three to five. But the question was, could we do pool testing at greater scale? Yes, we could, and it wouldn't be prohibitively expensive to do, so that was one thing. Then the other thing, and I really like sharing data and it's aggregate data, but you wondered, what are the vaccination rates of the various? Athletic teams, and the girls' basketball team has a hundred percent vaccination rate.
Undefeated in all categories.
And as does, as does the boys' ski team. Girls, and, and then they go down, right, and I'll just freedom off, but it's very, very exciting to the. Parents of the, of both the girls and the basketball and the boys' ski team, the JV girls' basketball is a ninety-four percent rate. The boys' swim team is a ninety-three percent, boys' basketball is a ninety-three percent. JV boys' basketball ninety-two, girls' skiing eighty-five point seven, girls' swimming eighty-two, and wrestling seventy-five. So even our lowest team has a very high. The, the team with the lowest vaccination rate has a very high rate, so I'm proud of our athletes and our athletes' parents and all of that. So those were two things, the other thing, the, the. The rate I looked at the most, and I had a meeting this afternoon, and Anne was part of it, and a couple nurses and four teachers, as we check in every two weeks on. Data around COVID nineteen, the, the case rate for. Hundred thousand over seven days was just around like four ninety, approaching five hundred, it's come down a teeny bit. And the infection rate for the moment is, is like one point zero one percent, and it's trending down. So that's sort of good news, but it sort of feels the calm before the storm. And we talked about the, the dataset from Cornell University where like, one day they had five hundred. Cases and next day they had a thousand, and then they sent all their kids home to hang out with their parents, right? So nightmare what's, what's potentially happening, and then the Omicron variant and all of that, so. I have concerns, I anticipate in many. Folks who study this and know much more than I do anticipate a spike in. January, so, so we'll see, we'll see what happens there, so that's, that's some of the COVID stuff. I think that sets up a little bit both the. There, there was Molly's motion that was tabled at the last meeting.
So it's back on the.
Right, it's untabled now, right? And, and, and there potentially could be a motion, I mean, not around anything, but there might be one around. Whether we would encourage or require. Pool testing, the other thing is the Great Barrington Board of Health took some action. Now they have a stronger statement around mask wearing inside, which I'm happy about. And they have a meeting coming up in January, and they've asked me and any school committee members who'd like to attend that meeting. To attend, so I'll, I'll share the, I don't, I meant to write it down, it's in my email, but I'll share the date of that meeting. If anybody would like to attend that.
So is there a mandatory mask mandate in Great Barrington?
No, it went from a recommendation to an advisory, it did, it did not go to the level. Higher than that, Board of Health is January sixth and six thirty, right? So let's take Molly's motion first, Molly, do you want to repeat your motion?
I don't remember, I was by my head, sorry.
It might be in a minute, yes.
For all students traveling, you know. That we, that represent our school and they travel into other communities, that they need to be vaccinated.
And so that was a motion, it was seconded by Bill, so let's discuss that.
I guess my question is, what, how do we define travel, was it, whether it's all athletics? Whether a student that is selected to go to a seminar is then leaving it with Boston with a class, like what? Like how, I think it just could very quickly become a very, very complicated situation of how we're determining who's leaving the community and who's not.
I think it's more on a regular basis, you know, like, my focus was athletics, because you have, like the basketball right now. They are seeing three different schools in one week, so that is the potential of the mass spreader. So that was my concern with all of this is, here we have our students going to multiple different school districts. Our students could be carrying COVID, or they could be bringing COVID back and spreading to everybody else. I know with football team, you know, we have a couple of kids that ended up having, you know, that have COVID. And their numbers were really low, so it could affect the team dramatically, so that's, if they're representing us, I feel it's a privilege at this level. But to do these things, I think they should.
Just to clarify one thing, the, uh, whether somebody is vaccinated or not vaccinated, they might still, uh, contract it and or spread it.
It gives them the opportunity to have a lesser degree of an infection.
Right.
Does not stop them from spreading the infection, uh, in any, any way.
Are you sure about that? I, I think that people vaccination, if they're vaccinated, you have a lower viral load, less likely to shed.
Less likely, but it doesn't, it's not a hundred percent. It's not, it's not, it's not a cure.
None is a hundred percent.
No, but, um, there's also some privacy issues with doing this in, in my mind. But that's, that's gonna be for the administration to figure out if we adopt this. Anyone else in discussion?
So this is just applying to sports, right? Sports teams?
I think, to be honest, I think I've been extra for that to get, I should have this at the high school level, to be honest, but.
That was my understanding of your motion the last time.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's where we got.
Because one of the.
Yeah, I think that's where we got to send the parents.
Because we got, we got.
The grandparents are fired up.
Oh, yeah, they should be.
Well, we got an email from a, a parent who talked about high-risk extracurriculars, not just travel sports.
Right, which I think actually on the table too, I should think it should be.
So could we make an amendment to your?
I think, yeah.
Proposal. I, I would make an amendment to include not just sports, but all high-risk extracurricular activities such as band.
So correct me, was the motion not all, both sports and, and extracurricular activities to start with?
Winter.
Winter sports.
Winter.
So I think it should be on the extracurricular activities at the high school level.
So can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
If I'm the father of a boy on the basketball team, and I've decided not to vaccinate him, and your motion passes.
He's off the team.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just like grades or if they get in trouble, I mean, it's.
I, I, I don't think the benefits of excluding, excluding kids from playing, um, or participating in extracurricular. I just don't think the benefits are there for, for that, but that's just my opinion.
You mean the benefits for being vaccinated?
I think everyone should be vaccinated. I wish everyone would be a hundred percent. But I, I don't think getting vaccinated is going to be, see such a difference for one student that excluding them is gonna cause more harm. That's, that's just my opinion.
Because last week we heard what Peter had said about why the proposed mandate was changed to not include that. And we heard that, and, and I agreed that in a sense, the, the students that would be harmed by not having extracurricular activities. I think that was your point last week, is that not, for some kids, extracurricular activities are really important. So denying them that opportunity hurts them in a way that might not hurt another kid who, well, I don't have to worry about that, I can do something else.
See, I'm really torn about this, right? Because I, I, I want everybody to be vaccinated, and I don't wanna close doors to kids around things that could be really meaningful and engaging. And, and there are people who come to school and hang in because they're excited about.
Yeah, they wanna play basketball.
Basketball, right? And, and there are people who come to school and hang in because they're gonna be in the tech crew or in the musical.
Could we, could, so what, I guess we're all.
If kids don't get their physicals, they can't play. If kids' grades drop below a certain level, they can't participate in extracurriculars.
They don't have the other vaccinations, they can't.
Correct.
Right.
This is, I just find this horrible.
It's a different point in time.
It's, yeah, really is possible. Except one other thing, my other problem is, is that the kids who aren't vaccinated, it may not be their decision.
So here, here's the thing, we all agree, we voted, everyone agrees we're trying to get to full vaccination or highest vaccination as possible. And we're all struggling with how we get there. And we keep focusing on this, who and where do we punish? Who and where do we punish? And we, no one will talk about incentivizing. We've got a billion freaking dollars in that student activities fund, sitting there, tabled more by students who aren't even in the place anymore. I would vote that any team that reaches over ninety percent vaccination rate gets two thousand dollars out of that fund immediately to buy team-related or activity-related apparel for the students participating in it. Let's set a goal and a reward for people to get vaccinated.
Okay, so I'm not gonna ignore that, but let's go back to something else. We asked Peter to bring back the, the data, and the data is extraordinary.
Yeah, yeah.
That, how much higher do you want? Well, you, if you're gonna, if you want a hundred percent, then okay. But the data is, you know, if you're going, if you're data-driven, the data is good, it's almost.
We shared percentages, but what I didn't share, and this is interesting, on the teams where it was ninety-four, ninety-three percent, it's one athlete. Right, so it's one out of sixteen, one out of fourteen, uh, one out of twelve. Where it's eighty-five percent, it's three out of twenty-one. Where it's eighty-two percent, it's two out of eleven. And where it's seventy-five percent, it's three out of twelve.
Well, the other thing that we talked about at the last meeting was that we wanted to push specific rollout to individual schools. So can we ask Christine for input at the high school level specifically with extracurriculars?
I have thought of this.
Oh, just, I, I mean, we, we talked last week about kind of that it should be up to the individual schools to kind of be coming back with proposals of how they would see rolling something out at their individual schools. So I didn't know if you.
To vaccination or full testing?
Uh, vaccination.
So I did not understand that to be part of last week's conversation.
We, we talked a lot about pool testing. And administrative team, and, and we're supportive of expanding that.
So could we, I, I understand, I mean, I want vaccination for everybody. If it was my choice, I would mandate it for everybody, but it's not. And, and I talked to Steve about this before, it's out of our hands in regards to that issue. Could we not make it mandatory for all people involved in high-risk extracurricular activities, not just travel sports, to be pool tested on a regular basis all during the term?
We, we're doing that.
Yeah.
So that is being done on an extracurricular basis, not just students. All students involved in extracurricular activities must engage in pool testing.
We did that for a month, and this body voted this out.
We're not doing that right now, we're only doing that for unvaccinated students.
Right, so why not make it for all students?
We had all, we, this committee voted beginning of school year, all students had to have a pool test. Then we got a minutia pushback on it, and the administration came back, voted we would throw it, and we didn't. That's.
So it's being done now?
No, no, then, then later, we, we waived vaccinated students from doing it.
Okay. I think Diane wants to say something.
Go ahead, Diane.
Uh, thanks, thank you very much. I think there's a big difference between mandating vaccinations and incentivizing, if that is actually a word, vaccination. So I agree with Rich that we should make an incentive for teams to have all of their players vaccinated. But I would never vote for something that would keep a kid off a team or out of band. I would very much support pool testing for all students vaccinated or not. But I would never want to personally say to a kid, you are off a team because you or your parents have decided not to vaccinate you.
Thank you, Diane. Incentivizing, by the way, Rich's idea, which, uh, on the face of it, seems like a good idea. Talk about the amount of peer pressure we're going to put on kids, because the team is, the team is at seventy-nine percent, and we need one more kid to get.
It's funny, like, we, we always use these like buzzwords around here that are so like, I love people say I'm against discrimination, but not discriminating against people who commit crimes or, or do anything. Discrimination on the basis of an improper thing is wrong. Peer pressure is bad, but it's, peer pressure can do bad things. But we have, all, peer pressure is another word for all these culture words we use around here, to get people together to think the same, to think in, uh, that their community is important and to do things together. So I don't, I don't, I don't say, I, I want everyone in the school not just to be vaccinated, but to understand that it's important for their community.
We, we want the same thing, we want a hundred percent vaccination. But if there's a player on the basketball team who's not vaccinated because his parents won't let him, that, no matter how much you incentivize, it's not gonna matter, it's just gonna make him feel terrible and feel like there's something wrong with, with his family. And maybe there is, but that's not how, there shouldn't be the pressure to feel like.
But the stakes are lower. You're not, you're not being removed from school, which was a proposal on this body two weeks ago, and you're not being kicked off the team. Maybe you don't get a sweatshirt, you know?
Well, you, you, the team wouldn't get a sweatshirt, because you're not gonna have eleven out of twelve kids wearing a sweatshirt.
And then you're not responsible for the team not getting.
Well, teams, teams, the, the, one of the beauties of.
And I, I, I have been here because the level of social pressure that kids are under right now in navigating this, and in navigating having to, whether it's right or wrong, whether individually, I believe everyone should be vaccinated. There are some people who don't, there are some people, some students whose families don't believe that. There are students who are unvaccinated because they got the first shot and they had a really bad reaction. There are students that are unvaccinated for lots of different kinds of reasons. And doing something like incentivizing, I fear would create a situation where we might increase bullying. Like, students now, already, we are dealing with all kinds of issues between students socially because it's just more difficult right now for everyone. And I would hate to see this committee do something that would hamper that.
So.
What, what if we could commit to expanded pool testing, but also publishing and making it very clear to the parents of their kids that are in each of the various activities, what the, the vaccination rates are? So parents can make their own decisions of, of whether or not they want their kids participating.
So, so that's fine, let's first start, let's, we, we have a discussion, we have a motion on the table. Once it's been withdrawn, we have to deal with the motion on the table.
What does that motion say?
That the, the activities who go on the road to other communities, who participate in those, you need to be vaccinated.
And so unless Molly's withdrawing that motion, let's take that motion up. And then I would rather do this through pool testing as opposed to vaccination.
Right.
It's just my opinion, I agree with Cory. Uh, Anne, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I think one point is now that the vaccinations is not the end all of y'all, because we know you can get it, you can become infected and you potentially could spread it, we don't know how much. So that vaccination is wonderful, but it's not a hundred percent. So obviously, if it's a new tool testing before you went on the road, and when you came back from the road, that would be by far the best. But, but it's true, we're not, it's not the protection we thought it was going to be six months ago from, from getting it spreading.
Especially when people only have two shots at this time.
Right.
Which is all of our kids.
Well, that's the other question, if we're gonna take this up, what, what's our definition of vaccination? Two shots, assuming it's mRNA, two shots and then a booster?
Right.
So they don't have the booster, but they got the two shots, are we excluding that?
Right.
Because the booster is becoming more and more necessary with the variants. So, so we have a motion, uh, I'm not hearing it withdrawn, let's take a roll call vote. Anne?
No.
Uh, Jason?
Nay.
Bonnie?
No.
Molly?
Yes.
Bill?
No.
Diane?
No.
Uh, Cory?
No.
Rich?
No.
And I'm no, so the motion fails. I will entertain another motion. Uh, I think pool testing is probably something that may, Anne, go ahead.
I make a motion that pool testing is required for all students who take part in any extracurricular activities. And banned, I'm not sure that's extracurricular, so things like.
Well, say, say including banned.
Including banned, including banned.
So I have a motion, go to the second.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second discussion. This, would, would this be the, the, the musical? And the.
Yeah.
Anything? Okay.
Any, maybe I can say.
Okay, so, uh, student government?
Yes.
Okay. Why?
I think the point of this is not necessarily, because the point of the vaccination was that we sort of had this clear intention that people were gonna go into other communities, and that was the thought behind this. I really think that the basis of this thought is that it's not necessarily that you're sitting behind a Zoom screen and you're possibly contaminating other people. It means that that's thirty more people within our school community that are then required to pool test. Because at the end of the day, my goal, and I think what it should be, is that every single person in that school is pool tested. I understand that we don't have the, we don't have the capability, we might not have the legal standing to do that. But I think that as many people that we can require to pool test is, is, is for the best, that there is no argument against pool testing.
Does student government make the Zoom, or did they make?
It's, it's on Zoom, yeah.
Well, there's no, no, that one, come on, there's.
Is it not extracurricular?
It was not, come on, there's, that would be, I mean, I think Anne's motion, she can, you know, clarify, would be, it'd have to be in person.
Something that's considered hazardous.
And as Rich says, we could ask the administration to. How they would implement that.
No, I think we do ask the administration, ask if the other schools have any programming that's going on where they would recommend this to.
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't have to just be high school.
Just a clarifying, so about half the district signed up for pool testing, and they did that, um, uh, voluntarily. And the consent form says that it's voluntary. So if we're gonna require this, I'm gonna have to work with our attorney to cha, and, and specifically, it says, like, I was not coerced to do this or something. So I'm gonna have to work with our attorney just to change that language so that people who are being coerced to do this aren't signing something that says, I.
Yeah, but coerced is just a terrible word to use.
Unvaccinated students, how do they do it all already, then how did that language stand for them?
Yeah.
Good question.
I think we need to get more creative when it, I like Rich's idea about the incentives, but maybe like student government do something like have a blood drive done and have like each grade compete towards each other, and then whichever grade gets the most vaccinations gets like a field race or, or something like that, that way you're not. It's, it's all that, it's voluntary, but there's, there's that little bit of incentive, incentive so that the kids, you know, and it's a little bit of competition. But right now, we're talking about testing.
And I think the point of Anne's motion is that the students, no matter what grade, who are the highest risk for striding or, or catching COVID would be pool tested, those are ones. And, and I'm not sure there's as much, Rich pointed this out, of a backlash for pool testing there is for vaccination.
Well, I don't know, I mean, so what you guys were proposing is if you, if you don't, if you don't sign your kid up for, if the parent doesn't sign the authorization for pool testing, kid off team, right? That's what the motion is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're back to square one.
Yes.
And I'm, I'm, I will tell you, my kids, their first kids vaccinated in, in pool testing, and I opted my kids vaccinated in this district, and I opted my kids out of pool testing, and I don't know whether I'm putting them back in.
It's your choice, and you're right, but you are right, what, we, there.
So it's, it's, it's one simple thing, is this what we're doing? We're excluding kids from extracurricular sports because of medical, moral, ethical decisions made by their parents.
The other choice we have is to take the same tack as the Great Barrington Board of Health, and we highly recommend pool testing for all students, and try to increase the number of students who get pool tested. Maybe we'll get to fifty percent or sixty or whatever we get to, but take the stand that we're not gonna make it mandatory, we're not gonna be exclusionary, but take the stand that we highly recommend it, and.
So vote, we took that on our ten percent of the meeting.
Yes, yes, but, but we, we, it's kind of, what I would suggest is that it become more publicized. It doesn't have much teeth if no one knows you took the vote.
Yes, the other piece of this, and I think there's stuff in the community that they don't want the kids tested, because if they test positive, now the parents have to stay at home from work, right? The parents have been now identified as being exposed, and that's not true if you're immunized. If you're immunized, you're not excluded. If you're close contact to somebody who tested positive, you're not, you're no longer in quarantine.
And that's an incentive to get immunized.
Yeah.
Maybe one thing, and I'll, I'll turn around what you often say to me, which is, um, what's the expected outcome of what you're trying to do? Right, so is, is the, is the outcome to keep school open? Is the outcome to? outcome to keep school open, is the outcome to?
Can I, can I interrupt you?
Yeah.
Here's what I think, like Molly's original motion that, that didn't pass. I almost over, her, her, her was promotion was to stop the spread of the coronavirus.
Right.
Not to, not to social engineering, but I, I agree with that, but then I just couldn't wrap my, my thing. But what we are, our job here is to educate our kids. Our job is not to stop the spread of the coronavirus. And we're all trying to do that. We're all trying to be good stewards, but that's not our job. That's the more to health's job, the Great Barrington's faculty, West Act, that's the Department of Health of the state. That the controlling of the spread, doing that is, is, is for them to do. So I, 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 I think, I think we're, and we keep, we keep trying to balance this. Our job as health officials, which is not our job, against our job to educate our kids. And we all just kind of decided that extracurriculars are an important part of our educational experience, so we're not going to jeopardize that. We all just decided that the social, emotional health of our students and not having bullying in our schools is an important part of our charge, so we didn't do that. But we're fighting against two interests, one of which I don't think we need to be concerned with. The board of health, the Great Barrington is not doing their job. Somebody should hold them accountable. It's not our job.
Yeah, you, you've convinced me that, that, I thought Anne's motion a, at the beginning was the right way to go. And you've convinced me that it's not. What I think our job is educate students about what pool testing is and why as many students as we can should be pool tested.
Yes.
That we're an educational body and that's what we should be doing.
That's what I'm saying. Educate, and, and we're going to incentivize them to educate. I, I don't think we get our toe in the, you know. We had a major problem six years ago and these people like pretty much solved it with educating kids, you know?
Anne, I would disagree. As a student, I think you all have a responsibility to us that as we have seen from last year, as we saw from the, the spring of twenty twenty, education can't happen if we're all at home. If colleges like Cornell and Middlebury are all shutting down because of this spread, that we might not be health officials, but it is a responsibility to provide an education that education can't happen without the protection and doing everything in our power or your power to keep us safe. And I think that it would be naive to, to not move forward with a very, very robust, um, pool testing. And then I also think that any money that sort of Rich offered up as an incentive should just be put towards a more robust system of testing. Maybe we test more than once a week. Maybe we test a greater population of students.
So we, we have a motion on the table.
Kids in school, keeping the kids in school.
Exactly.
Well, I'll be a little cynical. Pool testing can keep it up.
So we have a motion on the table. Unless they are willing to withdraw.
If kids are vaccinated, they can stay.
So let's, let's take a vote.
What do we vote, Molly?
Yeah, Anne, do you want to restate the motion?
I propose that all students taking part in extracurricular activities, I, and I would ask the staff who are accompanying them in those extracurricular activities be pool tested. And extracurricular or high-risk activities associated particularly with the high school, but with input from the middle and elementary school and state.
And then just, just to clarify, are, are you requiring a recommendation? I didn't hear.
I mean, everybody's going to vote for recommending. I think that's true.
So is it recommended? Of course, Anne.
Um, what percentage of parents have elected to let their kids be pool tested now?
About half.
So we could be potentially excluding half of the kids on each team.
Yeah, but the, the difference there is parents whose kids are vaccinated, probably less of them participated in pool testing because but well, you know, that's.
The recommendation to pool test vaccinated kids was withdrawn.
Yes. So, so Anne, the, the real important question before we take the vote, is this a recommendation or a requirement?
Well, I guess we can start with a requirement and if it gets voted down, we come back with recommendations.
Okay, roll call vote. Anne? Jason?
Nay.
Bonnie?
No.
Molly?
Yes.
Uh, Bill?
Yes.
Diane?
No.
Corey?
Yes.
Rich?
No.
And I'm no, so it's five to four, it fails.
So I'll put forward the same one with recommending, which means that we will try to get more kids back in pool testing. Who were withdrawn because previous recommendation was they can back out.
Uh, yeah, I think education and attempting to get more kids to pool test is, I'm much more comfortable with that. Do I have a second?
Second?
Discussion. Roll call vote, Anne?
Aye.
Uh, Jason?
Aye.
Bonnie?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Diane?
Yeah.
Corey?
Yeah.
Rich?
Yes.
And yes, the passage you had.
I think it's really important that any educational stuff going out to anybody is that kids and families that are vaccinated are not excluded. A close contact is tested positive. And they are if they're, if they're unvaccinated.
And that might be the thing that gets people more vaccinated is the prospect of that every time somebody comes in contact, right, or gets infected being out for ten days.
Yeah, but I think, I think our point going through this as painful as it was, is our job is to educate the students about the advantages to pool testing, the advantages to vaccine, and that's their decision, uh, theirs or their parents. But that's our job as a community, as an educational community.
And I also think, picking up what Julian said, it's our job also to keep kids safe. And, and I, I, I agree with him. I, I don't think students, if, students need to feel safe in order to be successful. And, and that comes in with what is going to be talked about in the next topic. If you're not safe and safe both physically and, and mentally and secure, then whatever else is out there and what the school can do might not be as effective.
Steve, can I ask you a question? What, what's the most number of school committee members that can be in the Great Barrington Department of Health?
About a hundred percent. At another public body, no, you don't have to post it.
No.
An exception to public meeting law is attendance at another public, a body is not publicly posted.
We're just, the, the only thing we can't do if we don't post it is debate among ourselves.
No, it's exemption to public meeting law. You can be there. You don't have to post your meeting. You can go there and say whatever you want.
But. I can talk to the Board of Health. I can't.
You can all go to the Board of Health and say whatever you want to the Board of Health.
But I can't debate with you whether something's right or wrong at the meeting.
And that's not true. It's exemption to public meeting law. We can deliberate without, without posting because we're at an otherwise posted public meeting.
I've learned something.
Thank you. So I will send out a reminder email. Hold the date of Thursday, January sixth at six P M. And you can probably do it in your PJs. Okay.
Can I just follow, I mean, just add on to Julian's saying, he starts thinking, I personally, this is my opinion, feel that the risks involved in all, everything we're talking about now are mid-school compared to the risks of going over break, people leaving the state, especially flying in planes. I think we've seen in the summertime, people went away, uh, you know, the outbreak and, and et cetera. I think those are not, by far, a lot higher risk. So if we're want to do our duty to try to keep kids in school and not affect, I think whatever kind of notice we should send out as far as, you know, recommending or knowing the, the risks involved in flying on a plane or leaving the state. And then that, those are, you know, maybe, you know, I hate to, you know, put a guilt about people who, who might be leaving. But I mean, I personally feel that that, those type of situations, especially with the virus going, are a lot higher risk than anything else we're talking about.
Yeah, I'm happy to, to do that again.
And I, I think you guys, this is what I want to make sure. So we keep mixing the results of positive pool tests with close contact policies. I understand that if you're a close contact, but you are vaccinated, you're doing the test instead. You don't leave school, you just got to be tested.
It's very symptomatic.
You are close contact, you are vaccinated, there is just monitor. And if you're symptomatic, you stay home, report with the testing.
Okay, okay.
If you are unvaccinated, close contact, then you can participate and test instead. And as long as you have no symptoms and you test negative, then you can participate in all school activities, including after school activities, mask the whole time. You must quarantine while you are out of school. So at home or over the weekend, you have to be quarantined.
That, those, those policies are great. On to the pool testing policy. There's ten, ten people in a pool, correct?
Yeah, eight, eight to twelve.
Okay, whatever it is. Pool comes back positive. Immediately, what are those people allowed to do in the pool?
So it depends when you get a positive pool. If you get a positive pool over the weekend, we have the second swab, so we notify everyone and they stay quarantined until we get the second swab results. If you find out that we have a positive pool on like a Friday, for example, we actually get all of the students and bring them in. And as long as they're participating in pool testing, we do a test instead. Because.
A rapid.
Rapid test rather, and then we, we can identify our positive that way.
Okay.
If there's somebody who was part of a pool, also part of the pool, they already have consent, so they can do.
Yeah.
Steve, I should, I wanted to update in the second. So I, I had a little update on, on school safety that I wanted to share. Then two things happened in rapid succession. Today, across the street from the schools, there was a little electrical fire. And the electrical fire made popping noises. So, um, uh, fire and police, fire departments and police departments responded to that. And we shared with students and staff what the noises were in case they heard them, but nothing. Nobody was at risk, nothing happened. It just was what it was. Then the second thing is this idiotic TikTok thing and, and scoping the numbers saw my email about that. But there was this sort of generic, unsubstantiated, non-credible threat around tomorrow. We talked to local law enforcement about it. We talked to the state police about it. We sent out a message, which is in the spirit of being transparent. And most people appreciate the transparency of a message. And some people, it's like hearing an ambulance siren and just having a warning about a non-credible threat sets them off and raises their anxiety level. So we, we continue to see that as a non-credible threat. The message was sent out. It, it, it's split separately. And then all the South County superintendents sent out a message this afternoon. It also came up at the BART charter school. So, uh, I'm sending my son to school tomorrow. It's not a, it's not a credible threat.
Subcommittee reports, policy has not met, buildings and grounds?
Have not met.
Uh, superintendent's evaluation has not met, technology has not met, finance?
Well, you know, we met, but you just heard our reporter, Sharon.
I, I would agree.
Yeah.
Anything on the personnel?
Um, just two things. Uh, we added a BCBA, which is the Board of Certified Behavior Analyst. We're excited about that. We added a halftime ESL teacher and we're, uh, concluding hiring of another ESL teacher. So, uh, we're very happy about, about those hires. There's some other stipulated things and other things that just were the big ones.
Is there any reason for so many long-term subs?
Yes, people are out long-term for all, I mean, it's a dumb answer, right? But for all sorts of reasons, some which I, I can't, uh, fully.
It was just bad timing. It's not like there's some bigger issue going on.
No, I mean, there's very much a bigger issue going on, right? Like the world is in crisis. People are exhausted. Every single day, six or seven teachers are absent in school and probably two in each building are long-term subs. People are caring for, um, uh, sick older relatives. People are dealing with their own issues. It's, and it's not unique to Berkshire Hills. It's e- every school district in Berkshire County and for that matter, every school district in the, in the country.
Any other questions? Any public comment?
You, you can raise your hand at the, at the bottom of the thing and we'll recognize you.
Seeing none. By unanimous consent, we are.